Mayor, you can open the meeting.
Thank you. Let me welcome everybody to the Roanoke City Council regular session for August 17, 2020, and this is our 7:00 PM meeting. Participation in this meeting will be by electronic communication. Pursuant to Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, Chapter 1283, Virginia Acts of Assembly, 2020, Section 2.2-3708, Code of Virginia as amended, and other applicable laws and orders. At this time, I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Bassfitch?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. And we do have all council members present, which gives us a call. And by electronic communication means that we declare that it is a call in person, as permitted by Amendment 28 to House Bill 29 of Chapter 1283, Virginia Acts of Assembly, 2020 session, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3708.2A and 15.2-1413. I am pleased and honored tonight that Councilwoman Bestfitch will give us the invocation, and I will follow him in leading you in the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Bestfitch.
Let us pray. As we bow our heads and join our hearts, may we always remember our blessings, even in times of challenge. When we face adversity, may we find opportunities. When our hearts break, may they break open and never break apart. May we know the joy of serving others, forgetting our own difficulties. Knowing that we need each other more than ever, may we come together as one people, one community, united in hope and peace. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the which it stands.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilwoman Bestfitch, for that prayer. Welcome, everybody, for our, again, evening session. And the first order of business tonight is a certification of a closed meeting. And I'm going to ask the Councilwoman Trish Whiteboard,
Yeah.
please offer the motion to come out of closed session.
I move that each member of Roanoke City Council certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Chapter 37 of Title 2.2 Code of Virginia, Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting conducted through electronic communication meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Thank you. Do a second.
Second, Ms. Davis.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne? You on mute, Ms. Osborne? You're on mute?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bassfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Thank you all. We come on a closed session. Tonight's meeting will be televised and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursday, April the 20th at 7:00 PM and Saturday, August 22nd at 4:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Let me just say the announcements. I want everybody to be aware that the State of the Cities Address will be given on Wednesday, August 26th at 8:00 PM. It will be a virtual meeting, but you'll be able to join us through RV TV or on Facebook and other means of social media. But that, and that will be replayed a number of times on RV TV that Saturday and Sunday. All right. We're going to go now to public hearings. Public hearing A1 is to request Amendment G Young to vacate, discontinue, and close an alley in the 1800 block of Westover Avenue Southwest between Wilborn Street Southwest and Wacatah Street Southwest, adjacent to multiple properties along Westover Avenue and 1322 Wacatah Street Southwest. Amendment G Young, petitioner, is the spokesperson. There is one measure, which is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, Trish Whiteboy.
Michelle Davis, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
Ordinance, permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing a public right-of-way in the city of Roanoke located at 1800 block of Westover Avenue Southwest between Windborne Street Southwest and Watauga Street Southwest, adjacent to properties at 1801 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1805 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1809 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1815 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1819 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1823 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1829 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1833 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1837 Westover Avenue Southwest, 1322 Watauga Street Southwest, 1742 Memorial Avenue Southwest, and 1312 Windborne Street Southwest, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by trial.
I thank you. The City Planning Commission recommends approval on a 6-0 vote on this item. At this time, Ms. Young, are you with us by phone?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
I will recognize you for any comments you'd like to have, or if you just want to respond to any questions, that's fine.
I, may I do both?
Yeah, you may. Yes, you may.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to start with a statement to help you understand the situation. Dear Mayor, City Manager, and good councilpeople of the city, I represent 10 residential homeowners on the 1800 block of Westover Avenue and one house on Watauga. The Planning Commission, as you heard, heard our reasons for the application and recommended your approval of the vacation of the alley behind Westover Avenue. Your consent will provide this block of residence privacy, security, and safety. Along the backside of our properties is this gravel alley that runs along a ridgeline only from Windborne Street to Watauga Street. It does not function as a traversable alley because it is one block long and it dead-ends into a cul-de-sac, which is itself a short dead-end street. The path does not continue onto the other side of Watauga, and the Watauga to Deniston section disappeared long ago. Our houses are the only ones along the alley due to a wooded area and a city-owned field. All residential neighbors along this alley want the alley vacated and assigned to us, 100% of us. Additionally, nine neighbors on other blocks or across Westover from us took the time to send an email to support. The only objection so far seems to be someone who doesn't live near here and says our alley is just like her alley or any other. While that's perplexing, it's not a fact. Ours doesn't remotely resemble any in-use alleys in the neighborhood. It's not passable by anything other than a four-wheel-drive vehicle, and you will scratch up your vehicle. We have a public safety concern as well. When approaching Windborne Street, the Windborne Street Terminus of the alley, a steep gravel downhill slope could dump children or bicyclists into oncoming traffic on Windborne. Oncoming traffic on Windborne cannot see pedestrians or cyclists coming down from the alley. Vacating the alley will solve the danger of this side of the alley of a bike sliding on gravel or someone losing their footing. The city agrees that this is not a functional alley and is willing to allow 100% of the alley to convey to residential homeowners. This will make things much better for this block of the neighborhood, as we can better buffer from the commercial activities just 50 feet to 300 feet from our houses. That's in keeping with the neighborhood plan for just that need. The problem behaviors that we've seen over the past decade were not caused by the Mikkormak, and the new owner of the parcel will not solve these problems. It's up to us to solve the problems now and not wait until it gets worse. The alley is currently most used by Ado and her fawn, who will continue to have access. I'll stay on the line in order to answer any questions from council or respond to issues raised by others. We 10 neighbors appreciate the recommendation to pass this request. We appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you. I will now open the public hearing on this item. And are there any citizens, madam clerk, wishing to be heard?
Yes. Barbara Dirk. She's the only citizen trying to speak on this issue.
Okay. Ms. Dirk?
Mayor, members of council, I am Barbara Dirk, and I personally went over and visited with the block that man is representing for this alley closure. I live at 2607 Roseland Avenue, adjacent to Crystal Spring Elementary School. And as she mentioned, I told her that alley behind my house was asked to be closed by school administration. My neighbor and I fought to keep our section of alley open. We're very fortunate that we are able to have our tract picked up there. The alley behind this residential block is not wide enough for motor vehicles, so that's not, not a concern. I believe that alleys are positive additions to city neighborhood design. Robert Foss said, "Censuses make good neighborhoods." I say, "Alleys make good neighborhoods." Foss said, "Censuses make good neighbors." I say, "Alleys make good neighborhoods." When a city alley is closed, the land is divided or given 100% to the adjoining property owners. This means that our corridor is closed, that now and any time in the future, it will be really difficult to ever open it up for the citizens of Roanoke. Alley belongs to the citizens of Roanoke. I have attended National Neighborhood USA conferences. At these conferences, I learned that to remove unhelping negative elements from streets, parks, alleys, public and private property, we need to encourage good people to use the space. And I, the Grandin Road, Brumatt neighborhood is improving. The Mikkormak building that has a house and day grounds, those built homes there is being renovated by Cardinal Bicycle, and Cardinal is working with the Grant's Business Association to clean off the area and have, have some really music programs there. But my main concern is, is access by the neighbors to the rear of their property, and an alley would allow that to happen. There are several of the neighbors that have gates that look like they've been used to access the alley. Kids going to school could use the alley, and, and going down that hill into Windborne is, is a concern. Windborne does not have any sidewalks, nor does it have a bike lane or a parking lane on it. There's a, an incud. An incud leaves a natural area. It was part, I believe, of the land purchase here at Stan's, the fire EMS, and the neighbors didn't want anything, wanted to be developed, and so it just was left for a natural area, which is wonderful. Parks and Recreation has signed off because they are not going to put a park in there now. I, it's, it's a small area, but it does have some, I can see that boy scouts, girl scouts might come in and put a nature garden, or master gardeners might develop this in a natural way. But it needs to have access. And looking at the boundaries of the incud, and I think you have a map of the properties that I've seen, and then also, I guess, you see that it's mostly surrounded by, by personal property or by commercial property. The alley is what would allow citizens to have access to this land. This area is, is remaking itself. I, I think that the neighbors will find that this alley will be of benefit instead of something that they find negative. And I think if the land is given to them, then they will not have access to the backyard because they'll be on somebody else's, on other property. So I suggest that, that you can see what happens within the next year because things are quickly changing, and I believe that censuses make good neighbors, and alleys make good neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard?
No, there's none of the citizens.
All right. Well, I will close the public hearing, and now I ask my colleagues if they had any comments
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Cobb, I do have one question on the report that was submitted to us regarding the, the public commission's conversations. Under their work session, there were a couple of notes about the the alley vacation regarding the owner of the commercial property, and under number two, it says that the abutting property owner is aware of the request based on discussion with the applicant, the issue relates to the owner of the commercial property desiring to access the adjacent city-owned property via the alley. I, I just wondered if there had, if that had been resolved about the, because it, there's an indication here that, that the alley would be split or shared, and I, I'm a little confused by that. So if somebody can help me understand if that's been resolved.
Yes, sir. Is this, this is Shaw?
This is Ian Shaw, agent of the planning commissions. So at the work session, we just discussed that the new owner of what was the former Mikkormak store may have an interest in accessing the alley that has never been formally expressed to our department. We have not heard any official comment to that note. If the alley is vacated, the typical practice is the alley is split down the middle of paths going to one side of the alley and half the block going to the other side. So in this case, the alley, the owner of the Mikkormak or former Mikkormak store would be entitled to have to wait for that alley if he so chose to exert that ability, or otherwise he could work with the other neighbors to vacate it right, and that too would all go to the residential owners on the left side of the sign. But that would be something that the various applicants could work out after putting together the platform, the vacations, and they would approve.
Thank you.
May I comment?
Did I hear something? I saw it was the Bestfitch's hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to be clear because the wording of the ordinance wasn't exactly clear to me. The nine properties along Westover is the intention to extend what I'll call the, the side boundary lines of each one of those lots all the way across the alley so that the, the entire width of the alley is basically added to the back of, of those nine properties?
That is generally how that would work unless there's some other arrangement that was made between the various owners on Westover.
Okay.
The typical would be to go, just parallel the lot lines out into the alley.
Right, because there's
Correct, into the middle of the alley, and then again, if the owner of the former Mikkormak would just give up his right, his half the alley, then that would extend all the way across. That's something that the applicant and the owner of the Mikkormak would need to work out, is a work on their plan.
Well, and, and most of those properties are adjacent across the alley from the fire station number seven property, so, so the city would not have interest in keeping half of that alley, I would assume.
Correct, and discussions of fire marches, often parks and recreation, there's no way since they maintain the city's half of that, so that would go to the other side when, when that part's with the other.
Right, and actually, when I looked at it on the GIS map, it looked like that the, on paper, the alley does extend past Watauga and, and then dead-ends at that point. So would that little area go to the, the home on Watauga, I think it's 1322 Watauga?
Yes, a small portion of that extends east of Watauga. That would remain intact. That is not part of this application.
That's not part of the application?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, or members of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Members of council, Dan Callahan, we will, I will ask you before council votes, if there would be a motion to amend the ordinance. There were two properties, the last two properties in the titled paragraph, 1742 Memorial Avenue Southwest and 1312 Windborne Street Southwest, were not included in the first paragraph on page two. Therefore, the amendment would read, striking in the fifth line after 1, 1837 Westover Avenue Southwest, strike the word "and," and then put a comma, 1, 1322 Watauga Street Southwest, comma, 1742 Memorial Avenue Southwest, comma, and 1312 Windborne Street Southwest, comma. And then in the last line, strike the word "and" after 1, 330613, place a comma, and after 1, 330611, add 1, 330401 and 1, 330607. If there's a motion in the second, we amend the pending motion, and then you could vote on the ordinance as amended. And
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
And let me just, that amendment also requires the in the, the heading above the ordinance, because that's for the indexing for the court, we would add the two properties, 1, 330401 and 1, 330607 as the caption as well.
So noted. So, all right. We need to vote on that. Can we vote?
This is voting on the amendment. The roll call.
Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bassfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And now we need to put on the, the, put on this matter as amended.
Right, hold on the measure as amended.
All right. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Vice Mayor Cobb? All right. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on that?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bassfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And the ordinance passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, just with regard to each public hearing that you have tonight, if there are more than three speakers, the speakers will each be limited to five minutes, to three minutes. Just so we bear in mind, I think of this.
Yeah, and just, just for those going forward, just so folks know, so we've got the timer here, obviously, that we're running. So I don't know how easy it is to hear, but just so everybody that's going to be speaking under upcoming public hearings understand that if there are, the, the next couple of public hearings will probably be five minutes each based on the number of people that have signed up. Obviously, the one with the monument, that'll be based on three minutes. When you hit your mark, the, actually, we'll be disconnected at that point. So just so folks understand, they've got three minutes or five minutes depending on the item. And so, Mayor, when you introduce the items, if you'll remind folks of the time allotment that is available to them, just want to make sure that everyone understands that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're now down to item number two. There's a request of the city of Roanoke for street closure by barricade at Daly Road Southwest between Windsor Road Southwest along the north and heading southeasterly towards Grandin Road Southwest for approximately 340 feet adjacent to 3318 Windsor Road Southwest, 2334 Daly Road Southwest, 3305 Grandin Road Southwest, and 2308 Barn Hill Lane Southwest. Respectfully, Aaron Shaw is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance. Oh, Bassfitch, move the ordinance.
First, like
All right. It's removed, a second. And Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
And ordinance authorizing the alteration in closing a barricade of certain public right-of-way located on Daly Road Southwest between Windsor Road Southwest along north and heading southeasterly towards Grandin Road Southwest for approximately 340 feet adjacent to 3318 Windsor Road Southwest, 2334 Daly Road Southwest, 3305 Grandin Road Southwest, and 2308 Barn Hill Lane Southwest in the city of Roanoke, Virginia, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by trial.
Thank you. The City Planning Commission recommends approval on a 7-0 vote. At this time, I want to recognize Mr. Shaw. He has any comments, or does he want to just respond to questions?
This is Joseph Arthur from Stormwater. I'll be speaking regarding the Daly project. It's pretty straightforward. We're going to do the road closure there by barricade. We're going to have the low-rise timber barricades there on both ends of the right-of-way, and we'll be installing a minimum five-foot-wide swale to convey the runoff there along that portion of the right-of-way.
Okay.
And beside that, we should still be able to have pedestrian access along the swale the way it's currently graded right now.
All right. With that being said, and you may want to be available for any questions that may come, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are there any speakers signed to speak on this matter?
Yes. It is Barbara
Yes, it is Barbara Dirk, and Mr. Dirk, you have five minutes.
Okay. All right, welcome, Ms. Dirk.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I am Barbara Dirk. I am a pedestrian bicycle advocate. And whenever there is road closures, greenway closures, anything that says closures, that I encourage that planning commission to think hard about limiting access to the residents and citizens of Roanoke, particularly by bicycle or walking. That is, I sent you all a copy, a picture of the closure of Windsor Road. And it used to be that when transportation closed roads, they actually closed them off. And on Windsor, the gutter pan is the only thing that's left and you can't put the stroller, you can't, you have to get off and walk your bicycle through there. So that's the old way of closing roads. This one, as Mr. Shaw mentioned to you, is closer by barricade. And even though they're doing a stormwater swell there, they are allowing pedestrian and bicycle access through this area. Many, many times, alley, paper alley, roads, those paths that we used to have are good at a utility strip. Let me remember that. Utility strips are really good access for pedestrian and walking corridors to connect different sections of our neighborhood. In the inner cities, we have alleys and we have a grid system and out and at properties that was annexed. It's a little bit different. But if we can use all of these resources to accommodate walking and bicycling and promote our healthy, a healthy Roanoke, that would be possible.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Dirk.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No, there's no other citizens.
All right, I will close the public hearing and ask the council if they have any comments or questions. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. The ordinance passes. All right, thank you. Item number three is a proposal, proposal of the City of Roanoke to convey a former railroad library located at 2607 Salem Turnpike Northwest consisting of 3.0 acres to the City of Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Robert S. Cowell Jr., the city manager, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Trish Whiteboy, move the ordinance.
Michelle Davis, second.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the proper city officials' contract for the purchase and sale of real property between the City of Roanoke, Virginia and the City of Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority to sell to the authority approximately 3.0 acre parcel of city-owned property located at 2607 Salem Turnpike Northwest, Roanoke, Virginia, designated as official tax map number 2420206, which parcel consists of city-owned property upon certain terms and conditions of authorizing the city manager to execute such further documents and take such further actions as may be necessary to accomplish the above matters and dispensable with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
Thank you. Mr. Cowell, do you have any comments or remarks for this item?
No, sir, nothing to add. Be available for any questions that you might have after we discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing up now. And Madam Clerk, how many speakers we have lined up to speak on this?
We have one speaker, Frederick Gussler.
All right.
Yes, this is Frederick Gussler with the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Just want to thank the economic development staff, the city attorney's office, and the city engineer as well that worked with us to get the contract to where it is tonight. And we intend to use this property as an envisioned center. It's been designated as an envisioned center by Housing and Urban Development. And the concept of the envisioned center is based around four pillars, economic empowerment, educational advancement, health and wellness, and character and leadership. So what we foresee is having a number of partner agencies that will use this space, potentially even leasing some of it, and some of our staff that works with our family self-sufficiency programs, which is a big part of our mission. So this, this, this building will provide us, you know, an ideal place to have that envisioned center and to kind of work on a lot of services that are needed in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
No, sir, no other citizens.
Well, therefore, I will close the public hearing and ask council if they have any questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Frederick and the Housing Authority for bringing this to us. And I'm really excited to see in phase two of your plans, bringing so many community partners in to address these four pillars. I think, you know, the range of them is really great. And I think that's going to make a broad-based impact in the community and in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to commend you all for that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I want to concur with the Vice Mayor's comments. I think he and I were present when he had a presentation at the Housing Authority about it, and I think it's very important for that neighborhood. I think he can help out in bringing people together. So I, I'm pleased with that. Okay?
Thank you.
No further comments. I'll ask a clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. And wish you well, Mr. Gussler, and everything that goes on over there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item number four is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to convey approximately 0.0160 acres located at Old Church Avenue Southeast to Upper Church LLC. Robert S. Cowell's junior city manager is the spokesperson. There's a measure, there's an ordinance, I'm sorry. Phil Bass Fitch, move the ordinance.
Michelle Davis, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents providing for the conveyance of a parcel of city-owned property consisting of 0.0160 acres, 697 square feet, more or less, bearing official tax map number 4011119 to Upper Church LLC, a Virginia limited liability company upon certain terms and conditions and dispensable with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
Thank you. I want to recognize the city manager for any remarks or comments that he may have on this item.
Nothing further to add. Again, be available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are there any speakers here tonight for this item?
We have one speaker, Brad Bowers.
Okay. Mr. Bowers, go ahead.
Sir, I'm here. If you all have any questions, it's pretty cut and dry. I appreciate y'all's time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just before, this is Dan Callahan, just for the public benefit, Mr. Bowers is the principal in Upper Church LLC, the proposed purchaser. And we had asked him to be here tonight to respond to any questions he might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowers. There being no other citizen wishing to be heard on this item, we will close the public hearing and I'll ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or questions. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Just as we talked about this at our last meeting and what, selling this property, because I believe we had a rezoning on this property, am I correct in that? But what selling this property would do to the adjacent parcels in that area? And so, Brad, I wanted to say hello and thank you. We're glad that you are taking this opportunity to improve and especially in an area that your family's owned a business for such a long time. So personally for me, I'm glad that you guys will have the opportunity to have that whole section of the corner right there, which I drive by almost every day on my way to work. So thank you for keeping it up and making it look good and continuing to run your family's business out of that parcel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of council? Ms. Callahan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a point of clarification and the order of business tonight emphasized that. This is a proposed sale. Mr. Bowers is also applying to have, he owns several other adjacent parcels and is applying to have that portion of Church Avenue Southeast closed and vacated. That is not before you tonight. That has to go through the planning commission and that I recommend, recommendation to city council. That involves another process, including compensation for acquiring the city's interest or, you know, closing area. So that, that's an issue that will be dealt with after the planning commission acts on Mr. Bowers' request. I believe he's to be scheduled in the planning commission in September.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Ms. Callahan? All right, if there's no further questions or comments from council, I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you so much. The ordinance passes. All right, we're now down to item number five, which is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to remove the Lee Monument located in General Robert E. Lee Plaza, also known as Lee Plaza, located in the 200th block of Church Avenue Southwest in accordance with section 15.2-1812 Florida, Virginia, 1950, as amended. Robert S. Cowell Jr., our city manager, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Ms. Whiteboy, move the ordinance.
All right, it's been moved to second. I'll ask our clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the removal of the Lee Monument in Lee Plaza, directing the city manager to implement the procedures established to remove the Lee Monument, authorizing the city manager to administer, implement, and effectuate the provision of the ordinance, established in an effective date and dispensable with the second reading of this ordinance by time.
Thank you. I will, now the city manager, Mr. Cowell, any remarks or comments you may have?
Again, nothing to add beyond what's already in the memo that was included in your packet and certainly available to answer any questions you might have as you go along.
Mr. Mayor, before you open the public hearing, for the benefit of the public, the original ordinance was placed in the clerk's office, has been changed. The ordinance you just moved includes those changes and just for the benefit of the public, those changes are as follows. In the second whereas recital on page two was added that we had advertisements for public hearing on July 13, 2020, and July 17, 2020. The next recital was added that, and it provides, whereas on or about July 22, 2020, the Lee Monument was vandalized, two segments of the Lee Monument were toppled from its pedestal. In the effective section of the ordinance, paragraph number one was amended to provide that the two segments of the Lee Monument presently in storage, remain in storage pending completion of the process set forth in state code section 15.2-1812B and this.
Bring it on, Mr. Mayor, start it all again.
And, and we added this information to reflect the developments that occurred between the time the measure was first advertised and, and tonight's hearing. If there aren't any other questions, council, at this point, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm hearing a lot of some discussion in the background. I guess it's part of the technology process of calling in. But we will open the public hearing and ask if there's any citizens wishing to be heard. I think they are. Ms. Court, could you recognize those people that are wishing to be heard, probably three at a time? And please advise them that they have three minutes each.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in addition to the, there are 10 speakers who have signed up and, and the clerk will be calling them in order of their signing. Two citizens provided you with comments. In addition, Mr. Gregory provided comments, which I believe we provided to you last week. He's our first speaker. Let me provide you with the written comments first as part of the public hearing. The first is an email from James Matthews, 441 Highland Avenue Southwest. "I would like to add my voice to the varied chorus concerning the Lee Memorial. I am not a racist nor a bigot. I realize that my time and words are most likely wasted as the council has already made its decision on the rising tide of political correctness. I disagree with the removal. I think the best path forward in race relations is interpersonal relationships. Removal of this monument pits one group against another, making adversaries of people who are slowly but surely becoming friends, if not themselves, then at least their children. It will also do nothing to better anyone's life. Add to the historic narrative, don't subtract from it. Don't decide whose past is more important. Put it to a referendum if you must. I also fear a political backlash. We are in dire times in this country, the only solution of which is a change in leadership. Angering and energizing those who would reelect Trump is not prudent. This is not the time for it. Keep your eye on the larger prize. The election is coming." The second comment was received back in June, and this is from John H. Woolwine, W O L, W O O L, W I N E, regarding the removal of the Lee, of the monument in Lee Plaza. "My request to the Roanoke City Council is that your consideration regarding the planned removal of the monument to General Robert E. Lee in the Roanoke Plaza. I understand that no removal will occur until after the month of June. My request is to briefly address the Roanoke City Council to offer reasons why we should best leave the memorial. This is not about defending the legacy of General Lee or our southern heritage as some proclaim. I do not have a Confederate flag, and Lee did not publicly display one after the Civil War." It is about the unintended consequences of this removal on the fate of other tributes. If you remove the Lee Memorial, how will you respond to those who want to remove the last name of President Woodrow Wilson from the World War I Memorial in the Plaza? Lee's legacy does not need defending. He made mistakes, but he did much worthy of appreciation before and after the Civil War. Probably nothing he did deserves a memorial and his letters after 1865 revealed his non-support for Confederate memorials. Perhaps he would not want his name on anything. Some will say it, it has nothing to do with his opinion or mine. I am concerned about the consequences to other memorials if Roanoke City removes the Lee Memorial now. Unlike the statues to Confederate dead in Richmond or Salem, the Memorial Lee Plaza is not a statue on a major roadway that all must see. Many probably did not know of this monument until the recent controversy. I shall offer more reasons why we should rename the Plaza, but leave the Lee Memorial." John H. Woolwine. But that's the extent of the written comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. And Madam Clerk, please go ahead and call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Lenny Gregory.
Yes, this is Lenny Gregory. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Lenny Gregory from Daleville, Monta Tuck County, Virginia. I'm a Virginia-born, bred, raised, and educated in Roanoke City, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this very important and emotional subject to the 100,000 citizens of the City of Roanoke. My focus is on those Roanoke Valley War memorials in Virginia Code 15.2-1812 that are located on the Lee Plaza, such as the Civil War, the World War I, World War II, Korean, and Vietnam. Under the new law, effective July the 1st, 2020, mayors, city councils, board of supervisors may exercise their authority to remove any of these monuments without any citizens' voices being heard, denying citizens of equal justice and treatment for all under the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. All of these memorials and monuments are important for us all to learn from history, some of which we may not agree with, but nevertheless important to avoid repeating those awful times. All of the memorials and monuments are, in fact, pieces of art that represent the honor and virtue that exist in fallen soldiers in these historic times. All of these memorials and monuments are public property. They do not belong to individual officeholders, such as this honorable Roanoke City Council. They do, of course, belong to the citizens, and if it is their will of the citizens that they be removed in a legal and respectful manner, so be it. I am positive that our citizens have participated in or had relatives or friends in many of these wars that have given their all to give all of us freedom, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. At my age, I have lived through many of these wars and recall hearing complaints about the atomic bomb in World War II. Complaints about the Korean, Vietnam, are more current wars, such as Desert Storm, Iraqi Freedom, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not suggesting that this city council would act to remove any or all of those memorials, but what about in the future if some locality that may be governed by some of those that complain of all the wars or of guns or complain of sending our children off to war or what have you? The action being considered right now, without question, could set a precedent for removal of any memorials or monuments without citizens being able to vote yea or nay for their removal. Today, just today, I learned that the Democratic House of Representatives in Virginia are going to visit their July 1st law to give local government even more authority to move faster. This should not happen in this city, this state, or anywhere in America. Thank you, Lenny Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Madam Clerk, you will call the next speaker and they're given three minutes. I don't know if other council members can hear it, but that time limit goes off. Can you let us know if that bell or buzzer goes off?
I will.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Brown. He's not on the line. So the next following speaker is G. S. Rosenbaum.
Welcome, Mr. Rosenbaum.
Hello, my name is Dr. Gregory Samantha Rosenbaum. I'm an organizer with the Southwest Virginia LGBTQ+ History Project and speaking on behalf of that organization. Earlier this summer, we submitted a statement, we publicly released a statement and submitted it to members of the city council, calling for the removal of all Confederate monuments, in fact, all across Southwest Virginia. But I'll read some passages from that statement, which is a bit too long to share in full today, but you have a copy. We wrote that monuments are not history, they are interpretations of history. Monuments do not convey facts, rather they convey ideas about who matters and by omission, who doesn't matter. As LGBTQ people, we know this to be true, for in Virginia, there's no mandate to teach LGBTQ history in schools. There are no monuments dedicated to LGBTQ people. Our own histories have long been erased, ignored, and unrecognized, and this is why we do the work that we do, and the project has been around for five years now. We write that part of remembering and interpreting our history is recognizing what, if anything, can be learned from the most evil parts of our past, and here locally, that includes slavery, lynchings, Jim Crow injustices, police brutality, mass incarceration, and more. Yet we believe that we can remember this history without placing the names, images, or symbols of known racists upon pedestals, on street signs, or upon government buildings. That's not history, that's glorification. Historical interpretations are always changing, as they should. This is why it's not wise to set history in stone. If you cannot revise an interpretation, you're not really doing history. And if you cannot revise a work in stone, you must destroy it and start over. We want, we wrote in our statement to draw particular attention to the Robert E. Lee Monument, although we're calling for the removal of all monuments. We noted that the monument was erected in 1960, the same year that black activists in Roanoke engaged in the first sit-ins at lunch counters, the same year black children first attended all white, formerly all white schools. In Roanoke, black activists were continuing their fight against urban renewal, which the city government is responsible for, and continuing to fight against the environmental racism at the former dump, city dump in Washington Park. Skipping to the end of our statement to conclude, "We think that there are incredible histories of black activism and heroism that deserve wider recognition. We believe these stories animate our civic consciousness and strengthen our pride of place. And conversely, we believe that Confederate history belongs in textbooks and that the relics of white supremacy belong in museums or ground down into a fine dust." Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Carey. You have three minutes. Mr. Carey, you may go ahead. He's not there. Next speaker is William Jury. Mr. Jury, you have three minutes and you may go ahead.
My name is William Jury and I'm Mayor Charlie and members of Roanoke City Council. Although you have already made a decision to remove the Robert E. Lee Monument, I still come before this body of government to defend the honor of a veteran. Yes, a veteran. And to dishonor one, just one, then you will dishonor all veterans everywhere. I don't know how you feel, but I enjoy the freedoms that the men and women that fought and bled and died and the families that sacrificed to give everything. So if a flag or a block of stone defines who you are, what you believe, or just your self-worth, then you have bigger issues to deal with. And if, one other thing, if you don't do something with the person that vandalized the monument, then really you are guilty by proxy. Thank you. My name is William Jury. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Jury.
Our next speaker is Charlene Hayes. Ms. Hayes, you have three minutes and you may go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I came to make two requests. First, I ask you to bring this to a referendum as permitted by Virginia law and ask the opinions of Roanokers. Robert E. Lee had a great love for Virginia and her people. That's why he came to their defense when an army threatened invasion. He and a generation of Virginians risked their lives to defend their neighbors, their neighbors' families, their own families, and their homes from armies that burned, looted, and murdered their way through the heart of this Commonwealth. This was the no greater love that we learn about in John's Gospel. And having this memorial in Roanoke says that when a veteran risks everything in an act of love for us, we will have the simple, common decency to remember him. And that's what this tiny plaza is about. If you go there, you will see the names of Roanoke veterans carved into stone. They too love their neighbors with that no greater love and paid the ultimate price for it. And so, secondly, I ask you, if you choose to take down the Lee Monument, please also take down the flags and the monuments to the other veterans. We know this isn't about the Confederacy. We've seen this all over Virginia and the United States. The mob will not be appeased with a humble memorial to Robert E. Lee. They want to nullify Virginia itself. They burn the flags, they burn the books, they vandalize the monuments. They seek to destroy Virginia's and therefore America's foundation. Please spare Roanoke a rerun of this moral train wreck. If you take down their Lee Memorial, please take it all down at once so that those of us who love Virginia can start rebuilding sooner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brenda Hale. She is on the line. You have three minutes, Ms. Hale. You may go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I bring greetings from the Roanoke branch in ACP. Folks, we know that the Robert E. Lee Memorial is a monument commemorating General Robert E. Lee, Confederate general in the Civil War. This statue was formally installed in Lee Plaza in October 1960. It was erected by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. Well, we know the 401 years' history of African-Americans. Slaves endured the Middle Passage, voyage, and were held in bondage until the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863. All slaves were not free until in Texas on June 19, 1863. There are millions of horrific stories that are germane to slavery, the Confederacy, the Jim Crow era, the KKK, and until this day, racial hatred, bias, and discrimination. Folks, we know the struggles of the 1960s. Bear in mind, right here in Roanoke, two African-American students were the first to enroll in the all-white school system in Roanoke. The Civil Rights Act was passed into law in 1964. The Voting Rights Law was passed in 1965. When I returned home in 1982 after serving thirteen and a half years in the United States Army, I started attending Memorial Day programs in Lee Plaza. I did not see any African-American females there and only a few of my VFW comrades. Well, let's understand, the Lee Confederate statue does not include the service of African-American veterans and all veterans. We do not believe the statue should be destroyed, but it should be placed in a setting that reflects history. We, as a people, cannot erase history. We must learn from history, never to repeat the horrors of suffering of one group of people again. Today, there are 105 nationalities in Roanoke, Virginia. Let our seven-time All-American City reflect that unique diversity without fear, shame, horror, or discrimination. We support the removal of the statue in Lee Plaza and further renaming Lee Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Hill?
Our next speaker is Reverend C. W. Contons. And it doesn't seem like he's on the line. We'll move to the next speaker. That is Ken McLeod. Mr. McLeod, you have three minutes. He's not on the line. And our last speaker is Dan Crawford. Mr. Crawford, you have three minutes. You may go ahead. Doesn't seem like Mr. Crawford's on the line. So that ends all of our speakers. No other speakers.
All right, thank you. Well, that concludes all of our speakers that wanted to be heard, and therefore I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions or anything that they want to, any points that they'd like to make. Mr. Best Pitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and before I share my prepared comments, I just wanted to respond to some of the factual information we heard this evening. First of all, there are no names on the war memorial on Church Avenue from anyone in the Civil War because there weren't any casualties from Roanoke during the Civil War. There wasn't any Roanoke during the Civil War. So that is simply not correct. If we keep the Lee Monument, that does nothing to protect the war memorial from removal by future city councils. It doesn't set a precedent that makes it more likely that they will be removed and it doesn't protect them if some council in the future wanted to remove them. I must say that as a veteran, I am not offended, nor do I feel dishonored at all by the removal of the Lee Monument. And finally, it's not possible for an army to invade its own country. The protesters who don't want to see the memorial remain do not burn flags. They love their country and they don't do any of the despicable things that we heard of. But some citizens have suggested that the removal of the Lee Monument is a knee-jerk reaction to recent protests or movements. While that may be the case in some communities and may have motivated the unauthorized toppling of the monument, it is not true for Roanoke City Council. Mr. Mayor, three years ago, as of last Thursday, the 13th, you and I went to the parking lot of First Baptist Church in Gainesboro, hoping that a few people would join us to express our support for the victims of violence that had occurred in Charlottesville the previous day. We had informed people about the event on very short notice through social media and some email change. We were joined by not just a few, but by a few hundred concerned citizens. If the Code of Virginia had allowed it, we would have begun the process of removing the monument that day, if not earlier. But a state law explicitly denied us that authority. In our legislative priorities for the 2020 session of the General Assembly, we specifically asked for an amendment to the Code of Virginia to allow localities to determine the future of monuments located on public property, a request we decided to include about this time last year. Clearly, this action was not motivated by political correctness or by anything that has happened during the last few months. Another argument we often hear is that removing monuments is removing our history. History is simply the record of the past, and we all know that we cannot change the past. As far as the history of Robert E. Lee is concerned, As far as the history of Robert E. Lee is concerned, the myriad of books about the Civil War in general and Lee in particular provide us a very detailed history of his life. A monument does not add one single thing to that history, and removing it does not take one single thing away. Numerous reports of the history of Civil War monuments and memorials have noted that most of them were erected in the late 19th and early 20th centuries. The Lee Monument in Roanoke was not installed until 1960, 90 years after Lee's death. Reviewing the history of that time may give us a better understanding of the intended purpose of the monument. In 1954, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled that segregation of schools on the basis of race is unconstitutional. Many school systems in Virginia refused to integrate, and some closed altogether in what became known as massive resistance. Three years later, Congress passed and President Eisenhower signed the Civil Rights Act of 1957. As Dr. Gregory Samantha Rosenthal reminded us in an email we received on July 5, and again in his comments earlier this evening, 1960 was a time when black activists were engaging in sit-ins at lunch counters and continuing their fight against urban renewal. There were demonstrations in Roanoke against the environmental racism represented by the landfill in Booker T. Washington Park, and the first black children began attending formerly all-white schools. It strains credulity to claim that erecting the monument at that time was a coincidence. The history of this monument is not the history of Lee or of the Civil War. It is the history of 1960. In 1969, Lenwood Holton, who was practicing law in Roanoke at the time, was elected Governor of Virginia. He had the courage to go to Richmond in January of the following year and demand an end to massive resistance in his inaugural address. He is someone who deserves to be honored, and we do, with a plaza on Franklin Road between the City Market and Elmwood Park. Oliver Whitehill, who also practiced law in Roanoke for a time, was one of the attorneys who worked with Third Good Marshall and others on the Brown v. Board of Education case before the Supreme Court in 1954. He deserves to be honored, and we do, by naming our local courthouse a justice center as a memorial to his life's work on behalf of civil rights. Almost all of the major officials of the Confederacy, including Lee, had served in elected office or as military officers in the United States prior to 1861. That means that they had taken an oath to support the Constitution. By taking up arms against our government, they violated their oaths and committed treason as defined by Article 3, Section 3 of that Constitution. That is a part of our history that the Confederate monuments are intended to erase, turning the attack on the Union and the attempt to tear our country apart into a noble conflict fought by heroes of the lost cause. What we need to lose is glorifying the efforts to preserve slavery, celebrate Jim Crow, and honor massive resistance. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bespich. Any other members of council? How many comments? Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to everyone who, who spoke or sent emails. Just a couple of reflections on what we've heard. In our, in the, in the provision made by the General Assembly, localities are given the authority to determine removing or relocating monuments. And part of that process is that after the decision is made, there's a 30-day period in which an appropriate place for the monument, if, if it's chosen to be removed, can be relocated. And I think we heard tonight a pretty compelling case for, for that to happen. For many people, the Lee Monument is a symbol of violence, not a symbol of honor. And the violence that it symbolizes for them is a reminder of the horrors of slavery, 400 years. As Mr. Bespich reminded us, this monument was dedicated in 1960, right as urban renewal was beginning, and over three decades would decimate the oldest part of our city, which was home to predominantly African-American citizens and many immigrants from other parts of the world who had chosen Roanoke as home. Finally, I, I just want to share this. Recently, I had the opportunity to walk to the Lee Monument before it was taken down with my youngest. And we were talking about history. We were talking about the scope of history, how history is an interpretation, and how for far too long, we've only heard certain portions of history and not all of history. And part of what we're discovering now is many voices and many perspectives and many stories of history that have long been hidden or tucked away that we're just beginning to hear for the first time. As my son looked at the monument, looked up at the very top, and he noticed three letters. He said CSA. That's Confederate States of America. But we're not the Confederate States of America. We're the United States of America. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Mr. Bush, right board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Bespich for his words and that history. Not being a native, I appreciated everything that you've said, very well said. You conveyed my thoughts and my feelings exactly. But I do want to thank all of the people that took the, the time to call in to express their concerns in favor of or against. I just want everybody to know that I personally appreciate hearing from each and every one of you. And it meant a lot for you to take time to call in and express how you felt, and you have every right to do that. And I just want to say thank you for taking the time to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Well, let me just say this then, that the things that, that Mr. Bespich said, and I also commend him on his remarks along with the Vice Mayor and Bush right board. I want to commend council because we, unlike others, localities and communities, we went through this process the right way, the legal way. You know, I remember there's a, a scripture that says, "Do all things decently and in order." We've done it. We've done it that way. I want to commend you for that. When I look at, talk to my colleagues in other areas and other cities, we did what we needed to do in this process to make it the proper way to go. Also, want to just reflect back on the time that, for the time that Mr. Bespich and I were together and had talked about, and I think some others, members on council, Davis might have been on council at the time, probably was, that we talked about with all the stuff that had occurred in Charlottesville, we got to do something. And I was just very moved by, I think it was one day, it was a Saturday, and I think the next, the, the following Sunday, we had nearly a thousand people over at First Baptist Church in Gainesboro of all denominations, of all races, there just wanting to say, "That's not Roanoke. That's not us." And they're just saying, "We had to say something." I was very proud that day that we did come together and do that. And I'm, I'm pleased and proud of the actions we're taking and the way we're taking. So I want to commend you for that. Thank you. Thank you all. And with that being said, I will move forward now and to make sure that all our council members have been heard. I will ask the clerk to please call the room.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Osborn.
Aye.
Price.
Proudly aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Ms. Bespich.
Aye.
And Mary Lee.
Ah, and there's ordinance passes.
Mary Lee.
Yes, sir.
Members of council and the public. Based on the ordinance that you just adopted, following the comments from Vice Mayor Cobb, the 30-day period now begins. The city manager is to apply this regard to that. And the procedures that the city manager will do is post on the city website for any museum, government, or battlefield, to contact the city manager's office within the next 30 days to make any proposal with regard to the removal of the monument. If, if there is a party that is interested in doing that, the city manager will present, post to you at the county meeting. If no historic government or battlefield makes a proposal, the city manager will present any other proposal that he may receive and submit a recommendation to you for action by council. In the interim, the monument, the two pieces of the monument that are not, that are being stored at this public work facility will remain in storage. There is a small pedestal that does have the, the history of when the monument was erected. That piece would also be removed once we know what has, who's going to be the recipient of it and when the city manager presents that. Be glad to answer any questions that they have, but that's the process that you've just adopted.
Well, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Thank you and your staff for going through the legal process and making sure that we were on solid ground in terms of what we were doing. And, and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. There'll be no further questions. Item number B, which is to hear citizens upon public matters. And I will call on our clerk, Susan McCord, to identify the. First of all, let me say that city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And based on the executive order number 51 issued by Governor Northam on March 12, 2026, amended executive order number 53 on April 15, 2020, amended 28 to House Bill 29, adopted April 22, 2020, Section 4-0.01, Chapter 12, 83. Virginia Acts of Assembly. Virginia Code, Section 2.2, that's 3708.2, and other applicable executive orders, laws, and ordinances. City council, excuse me, will be conducting this regular session of city council by electronic communication means without a quorum of city council physically present in council chamber and without the presence of members of the public in the city council chamber. So in order to afford citizens an opportunity to provide comments to city council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of city council conducted by electronic communication means were instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the city clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov and calling the clerk's office at 540-853-2541 by 12 noon on today, August 17. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address city council by electronic communication means. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have speakers signed up to speak? I'm sorry.
We have one speaker, Jeffrey Mitchell, but he is not on the line. So we do not have anyone to speak at this time.
Okay. Well, with that being the case, the council meeting will be declared in recess until Thursday, August 27, 2020, at 1:00 p.m. at Charter Hole, 32 Market Square, Southwest, for a council strategic planning work session. Thank you all for your work today.